Call this meeting of the Westland City Council to order, we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Mike McDermott.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Gabbell.
President.
Councilman Green.
President.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Colonel Londo.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilman Rukowski.
Here.
President Hart.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. For special presentations and announcements, we're going to juggle up a little bit, I'm going to call on Officer Yute first. He had somewhere to be, so.
Appreciate that. Good evening, everybody. My name is Officer Yute, Council, Mayor, Chief. Thanks for having me here. I've been with the Police Department for over seventeen years and our Department Disability Rep for our Police Department. And with the support of the Chief Judricic, we've been working on a few different things with autism awareness and the Police Department with the ADA Board. Couple of things, the Chief asked me to come here and present to you the Board today regarding some things that the Police Department's working on to make sure that we're on page and assisting the handicapped community. The first thing that we spoke with the Chief and we came up with is a disability card for the hearing impaired. Our officers carry these cards in their patrol cars and these cards are used obviously when they come in contact with a hearing impaired individual where they communicate via a card and on traffic stops, on public content out in the parks and with the community. The second item with assistance of the ADA Board, I designed an autism awareness sticker. These stickers are used, our Police Department's going to be passing these things out for the community, autistic awareness stickers to be placed on a vehicle where the autistic child is sitting to advise officers or first responders that an autistic child is inside the car. These stickers were very popular back in the 90s, I believe, when we had the child in bedroom sticker back in the day. So they can also be used, placed on the home front door advising officers of an autistic child inside the home or the vehicle. The third item we did with conjunction of our community police officers, we created an autism care package. These bags are put together by our Police Department and they contain a variety of different things here with our Police Department, including a coloring book, earmuffs for autistic, and there are a variety of different specifications with autistic We have a fidget spinner, a hacky sack, and some sunglasses. Most of our bags also come with a Westland Police Department badge, a plastic badge for autistic children. These items, these bags and the stickers can be found here at the City Hall, behind the security desk there, and at the Police Department at the front desk where they'll have the stickers and the bags. These bags are going to be available 24 hours a day. The officers are going to be aware of these bags or they can be picked up by anybody that has an autistic child or be well aware of an autistic child and their family could be used for that. Interesting parties, like I explained before, I am our ADA rep. I just met with the ADA Board prior to this. My contact information at the Police Department is 722-9600, extension 2276, and kyt@wlpd.net. And that's Y-U-D-T at WLPD.net. I'm available, if so, leave me a message, I'll get back with you. We're all in the same group together, so I'm always looking for different ways that the Police Department can be more of an assistance to the community in Westland with items like this and the handicapped community. Thank you. Thanks for allowing me.
Thank you. Good job. There you go. All right, next, we're going to bring up Devin Adams and I believe Gretchen Heinecke as well, talk to us about an upcoming event.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for allowing myself the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm with Westland Chamber of Commerce President Gretchen Heinecke. Tonight, I'm representing the City Administration's Events Committee and wanted to take a moment to update you all on the 10th Annual Blues Brews and Barbecue Event. On behalf of the City Administration, the Chamber, and of course, the Westland DDA Board, we wanted to thank Council for your continued support of this event, which I believe was approved on June 7. For those of you who may not know, this year's event will take place on August 6 and August 7 at the former City Hall site located right off of Ford Road. The address is 36601 Ford. As always, we'll have live music both days. Kudos to my colleague Gretchen here on securing this year's headlining act, which will close out the event on Saturday night. I'm pleased to announce that this year's headliner is national recording artist and Detroit Queen of Blues Thornetta Davis. Immediately following Thornetta's performance, we will light up the sky with our highly anticipated fireworks show. However, we are adding an extra surprise this year as we will include a drone show to add to the sky entertainment this year, so don't miss out. I couldn't be more excited for this year's event and again, just wanted to thank you all. And I'll turn it over to Gretchen to update on some more aspects of the event.
Thank you, Devin. Hello again, my name is Gretchen Heinecke and I am the President of the Westland Chamber of Commerce. Like Devin said, we are very excited to bring the community in Westland back, one of our favorite events, Blues Brews and Barbecues. Both days, we'll have barbecue vendors and additional food vendors on site, domestic beer, craft beer, and seltzer options, along with t-shirts and mugs for the community to purchase. This year, we are excited to introduce our family fun time to this event on Saturday, August 7 from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., giving families an opportunity to come and attend the event before the large crowds start to gather later that evening. During the free family fun time, we'll have crafts, inflatables, interactive activities, and other things to entertain these families. Thank you to the numerous Westland nonprofit organizations who have stepped up to volunteer at this event. We still have room for any volunteers, so please let us know and we will take you. Free shuttles will be running during this event, stops will be located at John Glenn High School, the William D. Ford Career Technical Center, and the City of Westland's Senior Friendship Center on Newburgh. During Blues Brews and Barbecues, please be sure to follow and continue to check the City of Westland's Facebook page as we will be giving updates from the event, most importantly, updates regarding parking, which is always a big important thing. As we prepare for this event, the Westland Farmers and Artisan Market will be closed on Thursday, August 5, but we will reopen for the rest of the season the following week. If you have any questions regarding this event, please contact the Westland Chamber of Commerce at 734-326-7222. Please be sure to come out Friday, August 6 from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. and Saturday, August 7 from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. for Blues Brews and Barbecues. We look forward to seeing everybody in just two weeks, two and a half weeks. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next, we're going to turn it over to Fire Chief Morris.
Thank you, Council President. Just two quick updates, one regarding the storm and one with COVID-19. Just summary of the President Biden declared a major disaster declaration for the state of Michigan, triggered a release of federal funds to help individuals recover from severe storms, flooding, and tornadoes that occurred on June 25 and June 26, 2021. The details of the disaster declaration and assistance programs are as follows. Residents are directed to call or fill out the form following the Disaster Assistance Link to apply for assistance from FEMA. This FEMA form must be submitted independent of any other forms previously submitted. The affected Wayne Counties can apply with FEMA in the following ways: Apply online at wwwdisasterassistance.gov, or residents may call the application phone number at This is all the information that's currently available. There's an emergency manager meeting scheduled for tomorrow that will hopefully provide some further details. Also want to take one quick moment to share a COVID-19 and vaccinate Westland update. We've completed all of our second dose appointments and have shut down the clinic operations at the Mike Madonna Ice Arena. We do have a pop-up clinic scheduled for the Blues Brews and Barbecue Event here in the city on August 6 and 7, continuing with our partnership with Kroger Pharmacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, at this point, we'll move into questions and input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only beginning of the meeting to address council pertaining to items that are specifically on today's agenda. Questions asked will be answered during the agenda item following a motion support from council. Is there anyone on my right? Sir?
Hello, my name is Pastor Edward Pruitt, a resident of Westland. In reviewing the consent calendar items C through H, I have concerns. The first concern is that there are items, these items are actually on the consent calendar. The second concern are specific questions needing answers. Regarding the first concern, these items have impacts on the community and in many cases, their finances. It is often that items like these are on the consent calendar and they move forward with no discussion most of the time. Even when the community requests to see council discuss items, the community ask and those requests are often ignored. It is concerning because the appearance is that council is not doing their due diligence and the public seems to be purposely left out. It is especially important to understand because many items are financial, which inflate a, say, $70 million initially proposed budget to about $160 million at the end of the year. There are normally two different types of excuses given, which is, one, we've given the public the agenda packet here today, three pages of 145 pages, as well as I'm comfortable with what I've seen many council members say. It is concerning because many community members have had to understand what the consent calendar is. They've asked questions a few weeks ago. And then, in this case, there are many things that need to be understood. That's why these need to be addressed in a discussion format. When we look at C, the approval of the ECO ambulance, why are these two companies chosen for estimates? Why weren't additional estimates secured? Are these the only companies that offer government vehicles of this type? What is the status of our current fleet? How many vehicles do we have? What type of vehicles do we have? How are they going? Are they aging out? This wasn't in the 145 pages. For proposals as any business would give, these seem to be short of information. Where are the pros? Where are the cons? It appears to be a "this is what I want" type of situation, approve it. But is it in the best interest of, is it the best decision for the residents? The bike way had a similar issue as well. There were no data-driven studies done and the community was overwhelmingly against it, but the administration said, "I'm going to go forward with it." We have to investigate this. D, the NICSIL, why are we renewing a subscription that hasn't been used effectively? How many community members are using it? Is there a campaign to get more community members to use it? Is it going to be used more? Because during this current crisis, there has been a major delay, which, as demonstrated, only occurred after community outcry. That was the only time that we started seeing information. Due to the lack of information, we have to see a change. And we need the community to hear from our council members. We need the community members to see their council members investigating so that they know that their council members are working on their behalf. Thank you.
Is there anyone on my left? This is on the agenda, so anything on the agenda?
No.
If it's not on the agenda, regular comments come at the end.
Okay.
Okay, very good, sir. Thank you. Anyone out back? Nope? All right. Anyone else in the audience? All right, we'll close on citizen's comments and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Landau, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Give me one second here to get back to my screen. Questions on C through, was it H or C through D? C and D?
C and D.
C and D, thank you. So, the way the consent calendar works is they're normally routine. These are routine things and if there's procurements that are going on the consent calendar, these are things already approved in the budget that were presented to the council as part of the budget, and these are the actual purchases that are happening based off of that approved budget. It's not adding to the budget. However, I will defer to our Finance Director, Mr. Smith, for further clarification on that.
So, yes, to the Chair. Yeah, the ambulance was talked about at the budget sessions. Also, there was a capital improvement study session where the Fire Chief went over the status of all his vehicles and all the equipment prior to the budget study session, so that was known to council. And like you said, this one isn't in the budget currently.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes?
Oh, sorry, question, item D.
Item D?
Yep.
Oh, the NICSIL. Chief, or Steve, that's again, we're renewing the NICSIL, we talked about that as part of our budget session.
Yeah.
Or Craig.
Turnover to Craig on that one.
Through the Chair. NICSIL is in the city's budget. This is a straight-up renewal. We renewed it every year. We have a few thousand members of the City of Westland that are members of it. We do use NICSIL for major events, weather reporting, weather advisories, things along those lines go along with NICSIL. It is, there is a link to it on our website. We promote it at community gatherings, among other opportunities to allow residents an opportunity to join it. So we do talk about it quite often. And please, by all means, anybody who doesn't have it, please join it. It's a great way to get automatic information to your cell phones through text or through email. I know for a fact that we just used it today, twice, as a matter of fact.
Thank you. Are there any other changes to the consent calendar? Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Signal dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items: Approval of minutes of regular meeting held July 6, 2021; Approval of minutes of special meeting held July 2, 2021; Approval of purchase of F-450 Stealth Power Idle Ambulance for Mercy Sales for the Fire Department amount not to exceed $335,574; Approval of subscription renewal with Everbridge NICSIL for alerting services utilized by the Departments of Police and Public Service, amount not to exceed $6,195.71; Approval of 2021 Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation Smart Contract to allocate the City of Westland's municipal and community credits to naked transit for the transportation services that it provides for senior citizens and disabled individuals in the community. Amounts are $82,726 in municipal credits and $131,807 in community credits, and if approved, authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract on behalf of the city. Approval of 2022 Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation Smart Contract to allocate the City of Westland's municipal and community credits to naked transit for the transportation services that it provides for senior citizens and disabled individuals in the community. Amounts are $82,726 in municipal credits and $134,172 in community credits, and if approved, authorizes the city and the city, excuse me, authorizes the mayor and the city clerk to execute the contract on behalf of the city. Adoption of Prepared Resolution Affirming Approval of the Senior Alliance Annual Implementation Plan for Aging Services for the Fiscal Year 2022. The last item approved on the consent calendar, approval to acquire two properties from Wayne County for the minimum bid price of unpaid taxes and sell to interested private developers, placing them on the active tax roll. Moving on to new business. Item number one, public hearing to review the proposed Brownfield Plan for the former Eloise site. Public hearing dates at July 6, 2021.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing. We'll begin first with a public hearing by an introduction and discussion from Aubrey Burman.
Thank you, Council President and through the Chair. A lot of this is going to be reviewed from our study session that we had last month, but there are some updated figures in here, so I will go through this quickly. So this project involves the redevelopment of the former Eloise Psychiatric Hospital and the Eloise Firehouse, as well as the demolition of the former boiler house and bakery, which are both existing blighted structures. And it also involves the addition or creation of new commercial space and the preservation of the historic K Beard Building. It's expected to be completed in three phases with a completion date of around 2026, and the total capital investment on this project is estimated between $12.8 and $13.8 million. So this is kind of just breaking out the three phases of the project. You know, the first phase is the partial rehab of the K Beard Building and the launch of the Haunted Traction Themed Event Center with two escape rooms, and the renovation of the firehouse, the former firehouse into the Eloise Firehouse Cafe. The second phase will include the creation of a themed ghost bar and restaurant, as well as event space for larger paranormal themed gatherings and special events. And the third phase will include the development of a paranormal themed hotel and will provide for the complete historic restoration of the original lobby. So, it's quite a bit of job creation from this project. Total permanent jobs created are expected to be between 50 and 100, with the majority of these hires expected to be local. In addition, the project should create over 100 short-term construction jobs, as well as 75 to 100 seasonal jobs during the peak Halloween season. Additional economic impact is that this will serve as a regional draw, bringing tourism and traffic to the area, which can help, you know, kind of spur some further development along the Michigan Avenue Corridor. So, in order to promote the revitalization of environmentally distressed and historically functionally obsolete and blighted areas within the city, the city created the Brownfield Authority pursuant to Michigan Public Act 381. The purpose of this Brownfield Plan is to basically promote the redevelopment and investment in eligible properties such as Eloise. And the Brownfield Authority did review this plan and recommended approval to the council on July 13 of this year. So I will not go through all of the eligible Brownfield expenses, but they come in at around $5.4 million. In red, I think the most notable on here is the demo and abatement is coming in at about $4 million. And so, I know that there was some conversation last year about the size of, or I'm sorry, the last meeting about the size of this Brownfield. I think that, you know, it's important to note that it's very, very uncommon that a property has $5.4 million in expenses upfront before you're even really increasing the value of the property at all by building onto it or doing anything additional. So that's why the mathematics of the site are kind of ideal for a Brownfield. So running through how the reimbursement would work, as we discussed at our last meeting, prior to the developers' current owners owning this property, it was owned by Wayne County, so there was never any taxes generated from this property in the past. Now, there is because it is privately owned, so the base value for 2021 is around $600,000. The city portion taxes on that are about $35,000, $36,000. So, that's not something that we would be giving up. We will continue to collect that. We will continue to keep that in the city. The increment, increase over time is what we would be capturing. It's a three-year phase in, so the capture begins in 2023, and that would be about $50,000 capture. Now, the BRA reimburses itself for its administrative expenses first, so that would actually come back to the city. So actually, the developers aren't going to be receiving any real capture until 2025 when the taxable estimation is at about $2.6 and the capture is about $73,000. From then, we estimate an annual increase of 1.4% going forward. So, as I mentioned, their reimbursement, eligible reimbursement expenses are about $5.4 million, but because they're not really building onto the structure, and the structure is already so large and it already exists, the tax increment revenue is not significant. So, because the plan's maximum duration is 30 years, it's actually estimated that the developers will only be reimbursed about $2.6 million for those, out of that $5.4 for their eligible expenses. And that is all I have, so I know we have the developers here. Council President, if you'd like to invite them up to answer any questions or to address the council, I think they're prepared to do that as well.
Let me go through the public hearing first and then let them address anything that comes up.
Okay.
So, right now, again, this is a public hearing. You have three minutes to speak on this one item, should you choose to do so. So anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? About the Brownfield? Is this about Eloise, sir?
No.
Okay. It's coming up and I'll flag you when it's coming up. Anyone else in the back? On the Eloise-Brownfield?
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing by Councilman Landau, supported, or excuse me, Hersberg. It's looking this way. Supported by Councilwoman Rukowski. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, public hearing is closed, so now we'll move on to item two.
New Business, item two, adoption of Prepared Resolution Approving the Brownfield Plan for the former Eloise Psychiatric Hospital Site located at 30712 Michigan Avenue pursuant to and in accordance with the provisions of Act 381 of the Public Acts of the State of Michigan of 1996 as amended.
Motion by Councilman Gabbell.
Yeah, well, there's just a.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Plan was approved by the WBR-A on July 13, 2021, and was recommended for approval by administration in WBR-A public hearing held July 19, 2021 at 7:00 p.m.
I have a motion by Councilman Gabbell, supported by Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New Business, item three, approval of reimbursement agreement for the Brownfield redevelopment plan for the former Eloise Psychiatric Hospital Site. Total estimated cost of the eligible activities subject to reimbursement from tax increment revenue shall not exceed $5,000.
$5 billion.
Tax increment revenue is expected to begin in 2023 on a 30-year reimbursement schedule. The actual estimated reimbursement to the developer is approximately $2,635,344.
Zero motion? Whoop. Well, I got to get a motion first.
Someone asked the clerk to add into that that this authorizes the mayor and the clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city as stated in the recommended action on item three. Didn't make its way into the agenda item.
So as the lawyer just added that, so everybody understood it and heard it, so if there's a motion by Councilman Landau, is there support? Support by Councilwoman Rukowski, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New Business, item number four, confirmation of re- New business, item number four, confirmation of reappointment of Catherine Sample to the William P. Faust Public Library for a five-year term effective August fifteenth, 2021, and to expire August fifteenth, 2026.
Motion by Councilwoman Rikowski, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Sample is up for reappointment. If you remember, we appointed her to the, the library board to finish an unfinished term. She's got a, I'm sorry, their developers are leaving there. They're pretty proud of that project. I was hoping, I was hoping they would give them a chance to, at least pitch it a little bit before they left. Would you, would you? So, I'm, I'm sorry, but they're, it's a really big project, so.
I'm going to allow it. I just figured I'd let them off the hook before they got beat up, Mayor, so.
They've already been the hook, now they want to start selling tickets.
I mean, they got off the hook and they want to jump on it, Mayor. I'm going to allow it. So, gentlemen, please. Sample, hold on one sec.
First of all, through the chair, I'd like to thank everybody on council, including the fire chief and police chief, and also the mayor. This is going to be a game-changing project for Michigan Avenue. Eloise is a phenomenal site. I didn't realize how phenomenal Eloise was until we bought it. From the east side, Mount Clemens area, and the rich history that Eloise holds, and the love that the property has throughout the community is very exciting to be a part of. We really want to make this a destination, not only for, regionally, but we want to do it internationally, and we believe this site has the power to do that. September twenty-third, just so everybody knows, Alice Cooper's getting the street dedicated to him by WCSX. He will be onsite, and we are naming the road that runs through Eloise, Alice Cooper Court. We are being invited to maybe do a ten-episode series through the History Channel of the rich history of Eloise. There's going to be many, many exciting things happening at ours, at the site. So we welcome all of you to just come and enjoy Eloise, because I know it has a special place in all your hearts. So we just are very excited about it now the work begins, right? So we got some proving to do, especially to the mayor. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that was a welcome interruption, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Sample, I believe she's in the audience tonight. There she is over there against the firewall. Ms. Sample has got, just when you look at her resume, she's got a ton of experience in the world of finance. She's actually the, the current finance director for the City of Wayne. She's been a great addition to the board, and we're asking council to reappoint her to a full term to the library board tonight.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Ms. Sample, congratulations, and thank you so much.
New business, item number five, approval of proposed land division in combination of two parcels, south side of Cherry Hill Road, just west of Newburgh. Planning Commission recommends approval, and if approved, directs the city attorney to draft the required land division resolution. This is planning department number one eight seven nine B.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman McDermott, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman, Councilman Hersberg, excuse me. Is there any discussion? Councilman, uh, thank, I'm having an off day. Mo, please walk us through this.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, council. The two properties outlined on your screen in yellow are located at the southwest corner of Newburgh and Cherry Hill. They're both zone I two, that's our general industrial district. The properties are currently vacant. Parcel three is the proposed location. I'll show you what that is in a second. Parcel three is the proposed location of one of the conditionally approved co-located marijuana businesses. That is sort of irrelevant here tonight. The petitioner is requesting to split the property and combine it with parcel here. I'll show you right here. So the area being split off is this rectangle piece over here where my cursor is. It is part of this parcel over here to my left, parcel three, and it is being combined with this parcel to my right, parcel two, in order to comply with Wayne County stormwater ordinance for lot sizes and to reduce the stormwater impact on the potential marijuana business site over here on parcel two. So the modification is basically adjusting parcel two and increasing the size of this parcel over here. Both resulting parcels comply with the I two zoning regulations for lot area. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on this on July seventh and are recommending approval to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Now, are there any discussions from the council? Any discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New bike, excuse me, new business, item number six, approval of special land use for proposed natural gas regulator located at fifty-nine eighty North Wayne Road, west side of Wayne Road between Stacy and Ford Road. This is planning department number two two five zero.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilwoman Rikowski. Mo?
Thank you. Property on your screen is located on the southeast corner of Wayne and Stacy. There is a vacant medical building in front of that red square on your screen. The site is approximately sixteen thousand square feet and is zone C B three, general commercial business. Consumers Energy tonight proposes to construct a natural gas regulator on the vacant area outlined in red. This land area is approximately seven thousand square feet and will be controlled by Consumers Energy through a permanent easement granted by the property owner. The natural gas regulator area will include a two-hundred-and-forty-square-foot building. I'll show you what that looks like in a moment. The site will be screened from Stacy with a seven-foot-tall chain-link fence on the eastern portion, and there's going to be seven four-foot-tall shrubs planted along the Stacy frontage just in front of the fence. Natural gas regulators are classified by the zoning ordinance as essential services, but in the commercial and residential zoning districts require special land use approval by the city council. Some quick facts about this operation. The site will contain one driveway located at Stacy. The driveway will be used for maintenance purposes only. The site is expected to be operational twenty-four seven, but remain unstaffed. The 2018 master plan indicates community commercial for this site, and this is a semi-public use, which is permitted in that future land use designation. This is some photos of some natural gas regulators around the area. This is somewhat of an exact replica of what we will have on, at Stacy and Wayne without the barbed wire up at the top. Those are what the shrubs will look like. That's a rendering of the exact site with the bowling alley in the background. This is a location of existing natural gas regulators within the city. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this July seventh and are recommending approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Consumers Energy is also in the audience. Thank you.
Sure. The petitioner want, here, wanted to add anything? If you don't want to add anything, you don't have to. Okay. Is there any discussion from the council?
Yeah.
I don't have your light, sorry. Hold on. There we are. Councilman Hersberg?
So I did have a couple of questions for the petitioner, just about the screening. I see in our packet you're only screening one side of the fence. Is there a reason for that, or what do we have to do to get you to screen all four sides?
With this particular type of facility, I'm sorry, Joe Lawson, Consumers Energy, One Energy Plaza, Jackson, Michigan. The reason we don't screen all four sides in these particular types of facilities is we really do depend on the public as our eyes and ears for these facilities from a security standpoint. That's why it's a chain-link fence, not a brick wall or, or a privacy fence, if you will, because we really do, as I mentioned, require the, or depend on the public as our eyes and ears.
Okay.
From a security purpose.
I appreciate that. That answers my question, so I'll leave it as is. Could you explain a little bit what the purpose of this is? Is this for efficiency, or is this measuring usage more accurately, or what? Because we're operating without it right now.
We're operating without it now. This will better suit the overall distribution facility throughout the city in the immediate area. Basically, what this facility does is it's a, it's a regulator station, so it takes high-pressure gas and reduces it down to a lower pressure for distribution to homes and businesses. This facility will help balance what, you saw the, the map where we have regulators throughout the city, but this will better balance the facility, the system. That way, if there's an issue somewhere else, we have a backup, so we don't lose that distribution.
All right. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Good questions, too. I had the same one, so two birds with one stone. Are there any other discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item number seven, approval of vouchers.
Motion by Councilman Londo, support by Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Okay. We'll move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It's a speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. Is there anyone on my right?
Hello, Pastor Edward Pruitt here, again, speaking as a Westland resident, as well as an advocate for the community. I have two sections of comments. The first, many months ago, there was a bicycle registration component of the ordinance rescinded, as well as a component regarding eating vehicles. At that time expressed that there were concerns that it took six months for these gotcha ordinances to be rescinded. These, as council stated, were no-brainers, but again, it took six months. At that council meeting, I informed council that there were ordinances still on the books that could be considered gotcha ordinances that still needed to be revised, ninety-eight one and ninety-eight two. To this day, it's the same way, especially because they don't even match state law. In one part, it uses term handicapper instead of disabled persons. It gives the definition as a person who has a physical characteristic characterized as a handicap, which limits ambulation or necessitates the use of a wheelchair for mobility or a person who is blind. We know that this is not an ordinance that is up to date, and because it is on the books, it can be used as a way to say, I got you. Many months ago, what, about four months? That's passed, and there has been no movement. Disability concerns should be a high priority, and it does not appear to be in Westland. Second, at the last county, city council meeting, our current mayor responded to one of our residents with a flippant and dismissive set of comments. When asked a question pertaining to what residents should expect from him, our current mayor stated that he does not respond to this particular resident. This resident has spoken out concerning issues in Westland? He is a resident of Westland, and he is a tax-paying citizen. As an elected official, the mayor is entrusted to represent all of our community, not just the ones that agree or don't ruffle feathers. It is disheartening to hear Mayor Wild state that he intentionally does not respond to this resident in any venue. Many in the community have spoken out concerning this practice, which appears to be a culture created, where the culture is created by one, the one leading. We cannot stand responsibly in an entrusted elect, with, in an entrusted elected position, purposely disregarding residents. Residents pay your salary, Mr. Wild. Mayor Wild, excuse me. In other words, the mayor, through his direct statements, made it clear that he will take your money, but if you don't agree with him, and if you make a peep, he won't listen to you intentionally. This is a major ethical crisis we are facing. Our residents, where we agree or disagree with them, deserve to be heard and not dismissed. With my last few seconds, this is, I appreciate the police department taking steps to be more aware concerning autism, but the concern that I have is, will it cause it to them to be a target for criminals? And then also, I take issue with the term handicap.
Your time's up, sir.
Instead of more sensitive statements.
Your time, your time's up, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone on my left? Yes, ma'am. Oh, no, you know, I'm going to let him go because he raised his hand so many times. He's, he's so excited, so.
My name is Louis Horvath. I'm a resident of Westland and Wayne for since seventy-seven, and my problem is Saturday, I, I took my son, my two grandsons to Westland Mall. They wanted to go there, so I did. I come down Newburgh Road, and it's, the signs are all down Newburgh Road says forty mile an hour. I went to Cherry Hill, between Cherry Hill, and Marquette, the police officer pulled me over. I, so I pulled into the seven, the funeral home parking lot, and I says, what'd you pull me over for? He says, you were doing forty-two mile an hour and a thirty mile an hour speed limit. I'd never seen any covered sign that says that it's thirty mile an hour. Does anybody know when they put that up? I can't argue it now, because when I came in tonight, it's covered with a burlap bag and a sign on it. Anybody know when it was done?
Chief?
Through the chair, sir, I think we, I'm not a one percent cert, but I'm assuming you're talking about the construction zone.
Yes.
So, yeah, the speed limit is reduced in a construction zone. If you want to hang around after the meeting, I can kind of take a look at the ticket with you and talk to you about it. We can, you know, figure out exactly what happened.
They gave me a piece of paper, just like C V S does.
Yeah, that's, well, the reason ours, all the instructions are on, are printed off on there, but I'd be happy to sit with you and go over it with you, but I'm assuming, you know, the, the speed limit is not ever thirty miles an hour on that stretch. It's because it is a construction zone right there, they reduce the speed.
I know, I know, I came here tonight, but I can't argue it because they got bags on it, and they got signs on it now.
Yeah.
Other than that, I, I don't know what to do.
Let me talk to you after the meeting, and I'll, I'll see if I can.
Okay.
Get you some direction on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, chief. All right. Anyone in the back?
Hello, everyone. My name is Daniel Byer. Today, I would like to talk about a specific trailer that is near my house. The trailer in question is a political trailer of our current mayor. The issue is not about the side ordinance, but in turn, something else. Today, I decided to inquire about the ownership of the lot in which the trailer is parked on via the Department of Building and Planning. It was relayed to me that the public information available showed that the owner of the lot was Francavilla Enterprises LLC. Upon comparing this info to that of the state website, it shows that the same LLC owns that of Independent Carpet One. With that being said, during June, I received a water bill, which also consisted of a business advertisement for Independent Carpet One. My question is, how much revenue did the city procure for said advertisement? As of right now, with the information that I have procured as an individual resident, this appears to be a situation of quid pro quo, and I believe it should be investigated. Thank you for your time, and I hope that our residents can procure an adequate response with this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on the right?
Hi, my name is Banita Bloom. I've received a letter in regards to the bike trail that was discussed at a meeting that was on a Friday evening. that was on a Friday evening at dinner hour, which hardly no one attended. The majority of the people that came were not happy with the idea. I was going to get a petition to find out whom wanted this bike path, but because of a family member that we almost lost, I was unable to do so. Everyone that I've spoken to on Wildwood is against the bike path. I was also told that this is just going to be pushed through because it doesn't cost as much to paint the needed signs, without even voting on this. I was under the understanding that we, as a country, were to vote on issues that affect every one of us, not to have things shoved down our throats. I was also told that the meeting was on the 20th of July, and then told it was on the 19th. Why? So we wouldn't attend? I have lived in this city for 44 years and lived on Wildwood for 44 years. People drive through stop signs, speed down Wildwood, and the meeting was to, and at the meeting was told, I was told, that if a bike is in front of me, I need to follow him. The police officers there stated that there was no accidents on Wildwood, then explained to me why there are so many flowers on Cherry Hill and Wildwood for deceased members from families. I just drove down Ford Road in Wildwood to get here, and there is no room on Ford Road and Wildwood for a bike. There happened to be a biker that was riding his bike, and there was no room for it, so I don't understand how it's even going to be done. It's dangerous. Edward Pruitt explained it to the greatest summary, failing to do the proper due diligence, i.e. studies, could, as seen before, set the city on a course for future lawsuits and other adverse legal actions that would fall back onto the residents. We do not have time for negligent decisions from the government of Westland. No decision, no action is a decision. I am requesting to vote on this issue. It is the people's choice, not a few members of the city. I'm in fear of anyone getting hurt, and especially small children. Other reasons, I already struggle now to get out of my driveway because of the garbage cans and the cars that are parked on my side, and I don't understand how they're going to have, uh, bike path on both sides. I'm also concerned about my property value. I don't know if this was, all the answers that we had and the concerns that we had at the meeting, there was nothing addressed. There was no answers to any of the questions that all the people that had there. I'm not against bikes. I'm not against family outings. I'm against the safety of children, and I'm hoping that this can be checked into better.
Okay. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone on my left? Yes. Ruby. She beat you last time.
Good evening. Ruby Richards, Westland residence. First, I would like to thank, um, Council President Hart and Paul Ruthenberg on such a quick response on them replacing my, um, large garbage can. When, at the last city council meeting, you told me to get, send you an email the next day. I think I sent you an email around 7:00. Less than an hour later, Paul sent me an email for one of my information and told me I will have one within 48 hours. Within 48 hours, he gave me a call, and he personally delivered it, so I want to thank you for that. And also, I want to inquire about all the branches that fell in my backyard from the storm a couple of weeks ago. Um, do I have to call for a special pickup, or do I have to cut the branches down in order to fit them in a can or trash bag? So, that's it.
Okay. All right. Anyone out back? Yes.
My name's Paula Naki. I've lived in Westland just about all my life, but I have a couple of questions on the Marshall site. I know, um, that they're doing tours through there and all that, which is great, you know, but I do have a question. Has anyone come up with a plan for this, and how much it's going to cost the city to do whatever, whoever is the, this brainchild is? I, I'm just curious, who do I, who would I speak to? What the plans are? How much is this going to cost? Because right now, what is it, $3 million for the, for the land and the building itself? I would ju, and who's going to pay for it? Like, is it, how are we going to do this? Great idea, just would like to know the bottom line, what it's going to cost the citizens. So, thank you. And, oh, I would like to thank Councilman Hersberg for answering a bunch of questions. Thank you. You have, uh, put my mind at ease on a lot of stuff. Um, so, thank you very much.
Anyone on my right? Ray?
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone tuned tonight. First of all, I'm going to clear the air with the Disability Concern Board, and gentlemen came up here. First of all, I wasn't even aware of it, but will correct the air, and I take the Disability Concern Board very seriously in what I do. When I go out, I always talk about people's first language, because people's first is what people's first is. When a person uses a wheelchair, number one. Handicap, I really don't like, because that sounds like it's a, what we do is we get better, because when I look at that ordinance, that our Disability Concern Board is going to look it over, we're going to fix it. Thank you on that one. And anyway, Tubman was here tonight at our meeting and did good, and I did, and I was real happy about that. Autistic, autism, it's very important for police officers. I'm not even concerned about it. I think it's really good, and it's really going to help out the parents, it's going to help out the police department, fire department, and it's for education for a lot of places. So, number three, someone made a comment up here two weeks ago saying about pulling off signs off the ground. Okay. That's very phrasey, but it's okay to put signs on people's properties, like the churches and don't get permission, but if someone did that to me on my property, I would remove the sign. Could you guys have permission in what we call it, for respect? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on my left? Yes.
Hi, uh, good evening. Mayor Wild, City Council, uh, my name is Deanna Statchell, and I'm a member of the Norwain Community Council. Uh, we would once again like to invite the community, uh, to our outdoor movie, and it's an afternoon movie. However, yeah, the screen will be an LEDs, uh, LED, so it'll be for a better, you know, viewing. Uh, also, for the, uh, for that night, uh, it will be on Saturday, or I should say that afternoon, Saturday, the 24th, at 3:00 PM. Uh, Lincoln Johnson Field, 33800 Grand Travers, uh, free popcorn and beverages, fun games for activities for kids, uh, and also bring your lawn chairs as well. And, uh, then, uh, my second comment here is Monday, October 4th, uh, we will be distributing, uh, school supplies with backpacks, and, uh, they will be, uh, great appropriate, so, you know, uh, the children will, uh, not be getting something that, uh, really they shouldn't be getting in the first place. So, uh, and then further information will be coming along with that as well, because that isn't till October 4th. And then, uh, Thursday, the 28th, uh, we will be having our sixth annual, uh, Hall of Fame at the Jefferson Barnes, and to be eligible, you have to live in Norwain, and also have provided, uh, a significant, uh, contribution, uh, to the community as well. So, uh, to seek an application, you would contact Hank Johnson, and he's the president of the Norwain Community Citizen Council, and his phone number is 734-334-0042. That's 734-334-0042. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone out back? Anyone on the right? Sir.
My name is James Godfrey. Good evening, mayor, council members, and police and fire. My situation has to do with the sanitation department budget. When we approved the 1 mil, that budget in '28, '29 was 6.2 million. When you take out debt payments, which are gone from this year's budget, repair the maintenance trucks, reserve for truck purchases, and take, you go down to 5.4 million. And now, we're sitting at, now, at 5.9 million. I thought it would be a benefit to us when we outsource this to an outside company, and it appears we got nothing but more cost. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody on my left? Yes.
Uh, my name is Melissa Sampi, and I'm a resident of Westland. I wanted to thank, um, Officer Yute bringing up that packet. Um, I think it's amazing, I'm a sister of a brother who has autism, and my parents actually have that already on their car, but they know a lot of families in the autism community wondering, like, where to get it. So, I think I'll talk to you afterwards. Um, is, if, like, Westland residents are the only ones that can obtain them, or if there's others that can? I have a few other comments, but I don't know if he can address now.
You, you got three minutes to play with.
I'll hurry up and answer.
Sure.
No, those are for everybody. We don't, you don't have to be a Westland resident. We're going to have those at the Westland Police Department, um, anybody that wants to come in and get one. We're also going to have a bunch at the front desk here at City Hall, so anybody that wants to come there can get one, or they can contact Officer Yute, maybe one of our community police officers can drop some stuff off at somebody's house if need be.
Awesome. Thank you. I know that, uh, Bridger School in Garden City, a lot of families ask for packets like that, so you might be getting extra inquiries, so. Anyways, um, I also wanted to highlight a few great things going in the city. Um, I know that there's a citywide garage sale going on, so I have a lot of things to sell. So, thank you for posting that. Um, in addition to being really excited, the library's open. Um, I saw that, and my son's, um, excited to go to the library again. And then, I know that there was a question about Marshall opening, um, open house for the residents. So, um, with that being said, are you guys going to be taking suggestions there that night, or is it something that people that can't make it can actually email suggestions? Just was curious to see, like, how input would be taken from the residents. Um, you guys can address after, just because I know my time's dwindling. Um, and also, too, there's a lot of excitement, so congratulations to new businesses. I see, um, Mayor Wild and council members out with recent ribbon coatings, awesome. Uh, Park West Dental on Ford Road, um, All-in-Fun Party Character Renault, and Privilege Kicks, which we've already visited, and my 14-year-old son said the shoes are awesome. So, a lot of excitement in the city. I love seeing it, um, and I'm also excited to learn about the former Eloise site, because I have a friend that runs Detroit Paranormal Expeditions, I think it's called, and he's been there, and he said it's very cool. So, I'm very excited about that. A lot of great things going on in the city. Um, again, congratulations to everyone, and have a wonderful night.
Anyone else in the audience? Sir.
My name is Burke Rock. Ladies and gentlemen, I, I concur with that lady that was up earlier about that bike path on Wildwood. Most of that, a lot of that road is county road, and cars are going down there lickety-split. Yeah, and I think it's a lame idea. It's like when Wild wanted to put a 10-foot sidewalk with, in Central City Parkway, it didn't make any sense, and this doesn't make any sense neither. And I can almost guarantee you, within 12 months, somebody riding on Wildwood on a bike path would either get killed or maimed, and I want to know if Wild's going to pay for their, uh, hospitalization and get their body back. It's, it will happen. I mean, I, anyone, I, any one of you go down there on any day, and you'll see how fast the cars are, especially between Warren and Ford Road. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, eight years ago, Detroit filed bankruptcy and had an emergency manager takeover. Because Bill Wild refused to take the advice of Mark Bias, our actuary expert years ago, Westland is now in debt $2 billion for police and fire pensions, and he'll be the last one that you'll hear it from. Uh, Wild gave out unaffordable five-year generic buyouts, but, but the generic money did not go into the pension fund, and that seems to be a mystery. Uh, through the chair to William Wild. Uh, William Wild, where did the generic buyout money go if not into the police and fire pension You're in charge, you, you're the mastermind of that contract. In fact, we had two, that was a five-year contract, ladies and gentlemen, and council members, and that contract still had two years to go, and there's nothing in that five-year contract regarding generic buyouts. He stuck that in there, which is just ridiculous. Uh, no other company would do that unless they're asking for concessions, and he spent hundreds of millions of year dollars. Uh, it's going to take 150 years to get back to 100% funded. When Wild came in, when 2009, the police and fire pension was 104% funded. Jeff, we were being arrested in this. Now, we're only 70.5% funded. I also, ladies and gentlemen, your tax bills, and this, I'm glad the Chamber of Commerce member is here, because this affects all 5,000 businesses and affects every household. Our mileage went from 3.5 mils to 4.5 mils, then to 8 mils, and Wild promised that, when he gave the generic buyouts, he would cap it at 30 people. Well, he lied to the council, and he let everybody that signed up, he let over 100 people take the generic buyouts, and it was no more than a Ponzi scheme, and it's, it's going to take five generations. Jim, Michael, it's going to take your kids, your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren, and your great-grandchildren, they're going to be on the hook for this. And what's even worse, it's almost 20 mil.
Your time's up, sir. Thank you. Hey. Is there anyone else in the audience? Sir.
Wow, mine's pretty mild compared to that. Um, hi, my name is Tony Parton. I'm precinct delegate for Westland 30, and I'm a member of the 13th CDRC. I have a few things tonight I'd like to talk about. Uh, refer to Ms. Tasha Green at an event, um, uh, attended an event that wasn't authorized by city council. She sought reimbursement for it. At a city council meeting on June 17th, 2019, council, council passed a motion that Ms. Green would repay the $1,019.42. Has that been repaid?
Are you going through the chair?
Uh, through the chair to Ms. Green.
I, I'm just trying to flip screen so I can turn it on. Go as fast as there is.
Thank you. Um, actually, the city was found to have violated Title VII, which is a civil rights violation, by even attempting to bill me on that. It is all documented via email. They rescinded the, um, bill at some point. It should have never been issued. It was discriminatory, what they did. So, no, I did not pay it, and I will not pay any invoices to the city in a, at, when I'm being targeted and treated differently from my peers. And you, sir, actually, I believe, attended the meeting, came to the podium, and called it out as being racist. So, it's really, um, very, I'm, it's, it's really kind of curious why you're here making a statement tonight as if I didn't pay a bill that I owed.
We never got an answer that it had been repaid yet or not.
Your, your comments during that meeting.
My time's running out. Would it be okay if I go ahead?
Okay, go right ahead. Well, I've answered your question. Thank you.
Um, about, at a council meeting about four meetings ago, Ms. Green stated that she would investigate the pay-for-play scandal at the senior center. Memberships were being sold in order to get, um, moved to the top of the list of the COVID vaccine. What were the results of your investigation? Uh, through the chair to Ms. Green.
Thank you. Actually, I did not say that I was going to do an investigation. What I did was call for an investigation amongst the city council members, which are the, the six, six of my peers. They did not open an investigation. Um, my, uh, position on it was made clear during council meetings, on social media. I contacted, uh, the news directly, um, and sent that information, and so, city council as a body did not open an investigation. So, actually, if you have questions regarding that, it would be best directed towards Mayor Wild, since that action, which I Wild, since that action, which I found to be appalling, was done by members within his administration. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Hersberg has proof of this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone in the audience? Sir.
Good evening, Mayor Wild, Council President Hart, council members. My name's Dan Statchell, Western Atlanta resident since 1980. Regarding this sign issue thing, I've placed out a lot of signs, I know where they are, I have locations, and I've asked business owners or the proprietor of the business if we could place those signs out there. I've got their reassurance that my signs are legal, and I have a list of where all my signs are. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is anyone else in the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Victoria Mayberry. I spoke to five council members four weeks ago about a subject that was brought up two years ago, when there was going to be the opening of the Drug Rehabilitation Center. Right now, it looks like we're going to have a windfall of a little bit of money coming our way. And we had residents, mothers, that were very concerned about having streetlights on Stacy Street and sidewalks put in so their children could get to school safely. And they're concerned about drugs being distributed in that area. And the mothers are very concerned at this time. And now that COVID is passing, and we for sure will have opening of school, I would like to see some of that money put aside and have, if you would please, sir, entertain putting streetlights in there. There are two apartment buildings on that street also, so they would have to be responsible for lighting up that area. But at least where the homes are, I think that we, it is necessary that the children are not walking in the street on an unmaintained road that is not graded properly on a regular basis, it's not chloroformed. And it should be, you know, a mandatory cleaning of the sidewalks so their mothers can walk their children there. I did leave a message for Mrs. Rotkowski, that if this is not possible, then maybe what we could do is we could ask Edison Elementary to create a bus stop for these children, where the mothers could go out, stand at the corner, and let their children get on the bus, even though it is only two blocks away. Uncertain things can happen within a very short period of time, and our children are our most precious assets in this city. So, I'd like to hear from at least the five people that I did speak with, and that excluded Ms. Green and Mr. Godbout, you were not here at the time when I was speaking to the other council members. So, through the chair, I've not heard anything about that since, and it's been two years now. And if you could just touch base on, not maybe what you've decided, but that you're going to discuss it, and something is gonna be done about it. That's what's really most important at this time, is that we move on this, before we move on other things for public entertainment for ourselves. I'd like to see our children be taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? All right, I'm gonna close Citizens Comments and move to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone.
I'm sorry, your arm was right in front of the bar, sir, I couldn't see it. Please come on up. Apologize, Mayor, I couldn't see his arm. Yeah, the door jamb was right there, I didn't, I couldn't see it.
Hello, so I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but I heard some, I got some answers from some administrators from Mayor Wild's department about ADA and accessible parking. And the responses I got back floored me, almost took me out of my chair. So, there's a animal control truck parked in handicap. I asked them why. There's a response, because there's tools in it, and we want the camera on that truck. Can't they secure the truck? We got fabulous Westland Police Department. Are they that afraid that the truck's gonna get broken into? That they're gonna take up accessibility parking spot? That's from Deputy Director Hassan. If I mispronounce his name, I'm sorry. Then, from the Parks Director, Kyle, again, I almost got blown from my chair from his response. And I seen Mike Minderman, Jim Godbout, and Mike Windell at Voss Park. And I explained to him about the chain across, there's a chain across, there's a blacktop path like, and going to the basketball court. I asked him, why is the chain there? He said to keep vehicles off of it. Again, we got a wonderful Westland Police Department. They see a vehicle on the grass that's not supposed to be there, they can go and ticket it. But having the chain there blocks someone's access to go play basketball if they use a chair, or if they have a visual impairment. The chain's low, it'd tear up a wheelchair. Someone could trip on it, it's not well-marked. And these are responses I'm getting from directors of departments. This city does not take the ADA very serious at all. It's shameful, shameful.
Is there anyone else in the audience? And if you're outside and hold your hand up, move it just so I can't see you through the door jamb. I think Paula's the only one that's still sitting in that spot, so I think we're good. Okay, I'm gonna close Citizens Comments again, apologize, again, I couldn't see you. Mayor, please.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Okay, so, I've gotta hit a couple announcements, but I'm gonna kinda go through things that I wrote down that came up from the audience tonight. Ms. Richards, and your, the branches, were they in your backyard or your front yard? Okay. So, if they're in your backyard, if you get those out to the curb, then we can, we can take care of them. If it's, if it's a hardship and you need some help, just contact our office, and we'll see if we can find someone to give you a hand, okay? That's the best way to do it, where actually, we handle those through the DPS Department. So, if you call my office or the DPS Department, it's a special truck and a special crew, but we'll be glad to get those for you. There were some questions about Marshall Open House, and the Westland resident that asked about that. Couple things, first of all, there's gonna be a public open house this Saturday, the 24th, and the following Saturday, the 31st, from, from 9:00 AM until noon. It'll be open to the public. As far as what is it gonna cost, we're still in that, in that process. If you remember a while back, the City Council approved a, a contract with Plant Moran Cressa to help us do some due diligence on the building to figure out, first of all, the shape of the building, and then if we were to utilize it, what would be our potential cost. So, that's, that's a process that we're still going through. The public engagement piece is actually for us to hear from the residents. What do you think we could use this building for? And we're gonna have the folks from the YMCA there, and they're, they're looking at potentially using 50,000 to 65,000 square foot of the building. But at the same time, they're gonna wanna hear from the residents just as much as we do. So, it's a chance to just kinda come and take a look at the building as far as the cost of the, of the building. You'd mentioned 3 million. The city of Westland's actually kinda stepping in front of the wrecking ball on this one. The schools, we're gonna pay about 1.6 million dollars to tear it down. So, I'd be looking at more of a, of a deal like we did with both Jefferson Barnes Elementary and with Lincoln Field, where we did long-term, low dollar, like $1 a year leases for those. So, what we do there as far as, is if we move forward, if we purchase it or lease it or whatever, it's probably gonna depend on what we're gonna do and how we're gonna finance it, so. But we're, that's still working. Whatever we do is gonna come back to City Council and, but it's open house, it was one of my talking points. Be a great chance to come in and take a look at the building, we'll have it ready for everybody. It's gonna be kid-friendly in the gyms, there's gonna be basketballs and stuff for the kids to play with while, while the parents look around. There'll be refreshments, coffee, donuts. 9:00 AM this Saturday and the following Saturday, it'd be open house, open to the public. Let's see. The, the question about the, the animal control truck at the DPS yard, I saw that our DPS director attended the Disabilities Concerns Meeting tonight. I'm hoping the answer that he gave you was that's where the truck was parked after work, after hours, where the, where the building wasn't open to the public. And I can see why they would wanna park it where we have our outdoor cameras. If it was during business hours, then I don't think that that's the proper place to park it, but I'll check on that tomorrow. As far as, it was brought up about advertising in the water bills. We've been doing that for a few years, it's a way to bring an extra general fund revenue to the city. It was mentioned Independent Carpet, they're one of the, the advertisers, I think North Brothers Ford has been one of the others. Mr. Godfrey, you asked a question about the sanitation millage, and a lot of talk, or a lot of thought went into the budget this year, the sanitation budget, and what the levy was gonna be. There's more to that, that budget than just the trash contract, and Steve Smith had already kinda got out of here before you talked, but I know that you've talked with him before, and we can walk you through it. There were, it made business sense for this year that we did the full levy. It's gonna be something on an annual basis that the City Council's part of the budget, will decide what the levy is moving forward. And then as far as, there were some questions about lights on Wildwood and Stacy. We did put up lights on Wildwood, that was part of our last street lighting. We, we did lights on, we tried to light up some of the dark areas of town, we did Newburg Road, but we also did Wildwood Road. As far as Stacy goes, that's something, I'll, I'll take a look at that, I know it's a dirt road. We're still trying to figure out how one day we could get that paid for you too, so we're, I'll look at that. Council, you probably saw Nixwell come out, that CSX Rear Road was gonna be doing some repairs at two of the intersections this week. There Cherry Hill, west of Newburg, and Glenwood, east of Newburg. Those roads are closed to traffic all this week, and there are much needed repairs being done there, so, sorry for the short notice. If CSX gives us any notice, that's good notice. They haven't been so forthcoming in the past. Council, then just real quick, thank you for moving forward on LOEs tonight. I know that the residents know that this is, this has been an extremely difficult property for the city to develop. Just when you look at the, the cost, like Aubrey had mentioned, to remediate the property just to get it to where you could do something with it, has been cost prohibitive to this point. With the current deal that we structured, do the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, I think that the city has very, very risk at all in this, so. It still stays on the tax rolls, and before that gentleman purchased it from the county, it was off the tax rolls for about 100 years, so. I think it's gonna be a nice addition to this, the community, and we're excited to see potentially a regional draw come in there. We're gonna have a community gathering this Wednesday night at Carrato Park. The focus is gonna be the Public Safety Department, police, fire, DPS, we'll have all their equipment out there. It's gonna be a free night with hot dogs and lots of stuff to do for the kids. And it was mentioned about the community garage sale, which is gonna be the weekend of July 31st to the 1st. Blues Brews and Barbecue is right around the corner, it's August 6th and 7th, and you're gonna start to see us really roll out our promotions for that. And remember, fireworks are gonna be on Saturday, the 7th, at 10:00 PM. It was brought up about some ribbon cuttings, we had three this week, and they were very welcomed. We have two more that are planned for over the next week and a half. And then, earlier tonight, you saw me had to step out real quick. We're gonna be announcing the grand opening of the Garden City Hospital's Westland Health Center on September 1st, and the call was from the governor, because we were asking her to help us cut the ribbon, and she finally locked into that date with us. So, we'll come back with more details on that in the future, with what time and everything, but it's gonna be a pretty exciting day as we open up Westland's first 24-hour emergency room in our city's history, so. That's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the attorney's office today?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. We begin Council comments with Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple comments this evening. I too am looking forward to the Marshall tour. You know, we don't know exactly what it's gonna be yet, I haven't been too excited about the idea for a lot of different reasons. You know, we, we heard a rec center, a senior center, but I'm gonna keep an open mind at this point, until we know the cost, until we know what we're gonna do, and really see what the residents wanna see there after these two community input meetings. You know, personally, I'd like to see the city lease out a larger space like the former Macy's or something like that. Usually a rec center has wide-open, multiple basketball courts and things like that, and you know, at Marshall, that's gonna be really tough. I know a lot of the classrooms are cinder block wall, so in my opinion, it'll be quite expensive. But again, you know, at the meetings that we had with council, there were a lot of ideas thrown around about what to do with it, and as long as we can find a use, I'll be in support. And then, you know, I don't like to bring things up again, but I did, it was brought up at Citizens Comments about there not being streetlights on Stacy. And we did talk about that a couple years ago, and I asked about that either the last council meeting or the one before, and I have not received an update. Regarding the LOEs, the owner mentioned that September, September 23rd, he didn't give a time yet, I'll share that when we get it, that they're gonna dedicate a new street to Alice Cooper, who, I'm not sure if he's a native Westlander, but he lived in Westland at one point in his life, and I think attended Wayne Westland Schools. So, I'm sure if the public wants to come out to there, the owner's been very open and helpful to residents who wanna tour it and see LOEs as it is now before it, before it goes through all these changes. So, that'll be September 23rd. That's about it, you know, just regarding that cyber attack that we had earlier this year where we lost all of our emails, we were told that the emails would come back. They haven't come back yet, and it's been a few months, and you know, I, it's been becoming a problem, for me at least. I had some residents forward me Word files with ordinance complaints from their neighborhoods. And I think that email was sent to the director as well, but it was sent probably the week before the cyber attack, and you know, I gotta, you know, we, we all get angry phone calls once in a while, but I don't like getting one where it's something like that, where the city already knew about it, we had those complaints. So, it would've been helpful to know that those emails weren't coming back. You know, I had info that I requested from the planning director, from all sorts of directors about different things. They took the time to, you know, compile data for us, and you know, that's all been lost, and we were expecting that to come back, so hopefully we can get that cleared up. Yeah, and then the last thing about the Wildwood Bike Lane, that's something I wasn't too excited about either. I think it's a step in the right direction, if we're trying to do walkability and bikeability, but if there's gonna be parking in the bike lane and garbage cans in the bike lane, which there will be every night of the week, because Wildwood stretches multiple garbage routes, so there's gonna be cans in that lane every day of the week almost. I, I'd just like to see us do something a little bit better, a little more secure, maybe an actual pathway. That would, that would cost more money, obviously, and the bikeway is just gonna be a start, so. I just, I just wanted to say that I'm not too happy with the plan, but again, I'm gonna keep an open mind and, and see what happens, so. That's it for me tonight, thank you.
Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I'd just like to remind everyone that there is a major election taking place in the city of Westland in two weeks. The mayor's election as well as city council. We have the library millage on the ballot, so it's a really important election. Again, it is the primary election, happening on Tuesday, August 3rd. Polls will open at 7:00 AM on August 3rd, and they will be open until 8:00 PM. So, that's a 13-hour range, and hopefully you can make it out to vote if you prefer to vote in person. If you prefer to vote via absentee ballot, that is happening now, you can stop into the clerk's office here at City Hall and come in and fill out your absentee ballot, or you can contact the clerk's office and ask that- absentee ballot, or you can contact the Clerk's Office and ask that a application for a ballot be mailed to you. But just keep in mind that you don't have much time, we're down to the last two weeks. The number at the Clerk's Office is area code 734-467-3191. If you'd like to give them a call, again, 734-467-3191. Hope that you let your voices be heard at the polls on Tuesday, August 3rd. Thank you.
Thanks. The only thing I have this evening was I just wanted to thank Catherine Sample for continuing to serve on the Library Board. It's, she's done a great job on the Library Board, is very well-qualified, and I'm glad to see that she offered to stay on the Library Board. That's all I have this evening. Thanks.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to extend my thanks to the Police Department for working on bringing autism awareness and tools for the officers to be able to help these residents in a meaningful way, as well as the cards that they have created for those with speech or hearing impediments. You know, part of having public safety is so that everyone feels safe. And so by paying attention to those who require more tools and having those tools available, I think is a wonderful testament to how caring our Police Department is. So thank you, Chief. And when I see Officer Yoot, I'll thank him for being our ADA Coordinator for the Police Department. And when we talk about safety, we have to extend that to our children, and I think, you know, Stacy is very dark. It is a dark street. And having a little one my own, I would not feel safe with them walking to school down that street, even with the lights on Wildwood. So, you know, we haven't had any meetings about what the city's plan is to do with the American Rescue Plan dollars or the upcoming infrastructure bills. So, you know, I feel confident, hearing the Mayor say that he's going to look into it, that he'll lead us to a good resolution for that. You know, we'll give a little grace to our Directors because they've been dealing with the flooding issues. And of course, those need to be priorities at this time. So thank you. And I do think the bus stop is going to be imperative for those families as well. I'd also like to extend my thanks and congratulations to Catherine Sample. It's always wonderful to see our citizens being involved in causes that are near and dear to their hearts, and it just makes our community better when we have such great participation. And she's a longtime advocate of the library, and literacy is such an important key for everyone because you, without it, you're lost. And having a vibrant library is very important. And lastly, I am personally looking forward to our, coming back, our Blues Brews and Barbecue event. It'll be nice to do something with the community that's a little bit more normal, and I look forward to seeing everybody there and enjoying just what Westland is, right? We've kind of lost some of the joyful activities through the pandemic, and I think this is one of the best ways to bring our community back together. And I'm excited for the fireworks. I won't say it. I'm looking forward to it. And the drone show, I think, will be exceptional. So with that, I wish you a good night.
Thank you. Councilman McDermott.
Well, excuse me. Good evening, everybody. Couple of things here tonight. Number one, thank you to the two petitioners who came with the news about Eloise here this evening. I think we're all excited to see that property get redeveloped here. And I want to thank Aubrey Berman, our Economic Development Director, and her team and the Administration for all their work that went into this. Eloise is obviously a property that, you know, prior to being owned by the county, has sat empty for, you know, quite a while, and has had people just kind of touring and doing self-guided tours on their own there. So to have this development, I think it's significant for our community. I think it's something that a lot of residents and people in the area are really excited about, so it's going to make us, I think, a destination attraction there on Michigan Avenue. So I think I echo the sentiment, all my colleagues in the Administration, that we're all super excited to have this development coming into town. I'd like to thank the Chief and Officer Yoot and everybody in the Westland Police Department for their disability awareness and autism awareness. I think the work that they're doing there is, you know, critically important, and so thank you to the Chief and all of our officers for really making that happen, to really reach out to the disability and differently-abled community to extend that into autism awareness. Again, just want to offer a thanks to the Administration, our entire DPS crew, Vic Barra, our Facilities Director, Ramsey, Doug Morton, for all the work they did with the flood cleanup and the remediation. You know, I saw Vic personally in my neighborhood again, working and helping out residents in the neighborhood. So just thanks again. I know that they worked overtime, double time and a half to get that done. And when you compare the response to, you know, what other communities have done, they're still clearing off debris in some other communities. And, you know, our DPS crew worked around the clock with priority to get that done. So thank you to the Administration and everybody who made that happen. Thank you to Ms. Sample for volunteering your time to re-up on the Library Board. We always appreciate people in the community who want to get involved in our many boards and commissions. Again, I'll echo the sentiment for this Saturday, and if you can't make it out this Saturday, the 24th, then Saturday, the 31st, for the Marshall Upper Elementary School Visioning Session with the public. You know, this is something that we've heard from residents time and again, why don't we have a rec center? Well, this is our opportunity to potentially have it. So I would encourage everybody to come out at 9:00 a.m. on the 24th or the 31st to join in on our visioning session. And then, as my colleague mentioned, we do have a very important election coming up, so please, if you haven't already, request an absentee ballot from the Clerk's Office. You can stop up here at Westland City Hall to request one. You can call 734-467-3191 to request one. Or of course, if you want to show up at the polls, make sure to have your voice heard. Democracy is not a spectator sport, it is a participatory activity, and you have to be involved and engaged for democracy or republic to work. So I would, you know, highly recommend if you haven't got your absentee ballot, request one, or make your plan for Election Day to go out and vote. And then if anybody has any questions, as always, you can reach out to me on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott, or at 734-890-2146, anytime but 2:00 in the morning. Thank you.
Pro Tim Londo.
Thanks, President Hart. I'm going to be brief tonight, I've been a little under the weather. I'll start off as well by echoing my colleagues' thank you to Officer Yoot for, and the Police Department, with the Chief and the Mayor's Office for bringing forth the new autism kits. I think they're going to be great for when officers might, you know, have an issue or not an issue, have a situation with someone who's autistic, they'll now see that sticker, so they'll be able to proceed with caution. Appreciate the kits. As he stated, you can get them right here at City Hall, or you can pick them up at the Police Department. I'd also like to congratulate Catherine Sample, appreciate her being reappointed to the Library Board. She's done a tremendous job. Like the Mayor said, she's the Finance Director in a neighboring community, so she's highly qualified to serve on that board, and I think they've done a great job together. I also want to thank the developers that came forward for the Eloise property. As someone who's a lifelong resident of the city and lives nearby there, I could see it from my house, from my backyard, I should say. So very, very, very excited to see that property redeveloped, and the future of Westland is bright for that, that project. Lastly, I want to thank Chief Drudruzik and all the residents that attended the last Neighborhood Safety Meeting at Voss Park on Saturday. We had a lighter turnout, but, you know, it's always important to reach every part of the community and speak with the residents and hear their concerns. And this is the third one, I've been at all three, and we're getting a lot of the same concerns at every one of them, so, and nothing, it's been, nothing that's been really major. You know, speeding in the neighborhoods, you know, like the Chief mentions, every time he gives statistics to that specific area, a lot of time larceny from a vehicle. What that means is you might leave your car open and someone goes into it and takes your ashtray chains, or, you know, years ago, they took my CDs out of my car, things like that. So really nice to see the Police Department doing those events. I believe the next one, as the Mayor stated, is going to be at Carrato Park in the North End. Any, same thing, anyone has any questions for me, you can always reach out to me directly. My personal cell phone number is 734-223-0200, and everyone, have a good evening.
All right, thank you. I'd like to begin tonight by thanking Councilman McDermott for leading us on the Pledge of Allegiance. And secondly, I'd like to thank the Deputy Clerk for coming and clerking in today in the Clerk's Stud. She did a fantastic job, and I think you all should tell her that when she leaves because she was so worried, and I think she did fantastic. So thank you so much. A question to Mr. Brown with the emails. Do we have the ability to do our own PST exports from our mail every now and then?
Through the Chair. So a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to clarify, there was not a cyber attack against the city. But to answer your question, we did poll the PSTs for all City employees, including the City Council, and I do have them available, so nobody, nobody lost their emails. When the process of migrating to another service is taking longer than anticipated, at that point, the PSTs will be merged with the existing email accounts. But as I've stated before, to City Council members that have asked, I do have PST files and I can make them available to them. It just doesn't work on phones.
Sounds good. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it. Next, Blues Brews Barbecue, do come out to that. It's going to be exciting. I'm really kind of thrilled. Other than fireworks, it's always fun, the kids dig it. If you guys haven't heard of this drone show thing, these are like, from, I hope this is what I've seen, and only on TV, these are hundreds, if not thousands, of little, little drones that fly through the sky and light up and make images. So it's, it's a large, moving technology, technological phenomenon. It's, I'm really excited to come see it. I've only seen them on YouTube, so this is really cutting-edge. It's really neat. So for nothing else, come out to that, because I can't wait to see it. That's going to be really cool. So really excited. With Marshall, I guess everybody's really put in their, their input, and the Administration did as well. We've still got so many more inputs that we're putting in, we only have any outputs yet, right? So all the inputs are all of the information, all of the fact gathering, understanding, again, like Plant Moran Cressa doing their structural surveys. And then you, the community, telling us, I want this, I don't want that. All of those things are inputs into the decision process, so then the output, the outputs would be, all right, well, it's going to cost this to do this, or this to do that. So there's no hard costs yet because we really don't know. We're baking a cake, but we don't know what kind, and we don't know how big, and you guys got to tell us what ingredients you wanted and how elaborate it's going to be. And then we'll be able to come back and tell you, all right, this is your triple-tier wedding cake, what do you think? So it'll be, it'll be up to you and all of us working together on these sessions to be able to get all the inputs that are necessary to have the outputs that you're looking for. So that's with that. As far as, you know, using another building, I think Marshall's really the only smart way to do this right now, looking at the inventory that we have. It is a school building, they were going to demolish it at the tune of $1.6 million. If we leased that for $1 a year for 50 years, I'd be hard-pressed to find any other lease in any other building that's going to give us a better deal. Now, that's a net, but even if we purchased it, a lot less. I know we're all kind of interested in kind of saving the mall. Macy's was brought up earlier. That's privately owned, and they could choose to lease it to us, they could choose not to lease it to us, they could choose to demolish it, and then our rec center goes with it. So I don't think that would probably be the best way. I like the intent, I like the spirit behind that, but, you know, financially, long-term planning, I just don't think that'll work, so I don't want everybody to kind of walk off with that, because I just really don't see how the COGS will mesh on that kind of arrangement. And other than that, oh, one other thing, DPS, I'll say the same thing I did two weeks ago. If you see a DPS person, please thank them for everything that they did during the storm. They all went on, they all came home, they all worked, they all gave up their vacations. A lot of them lived here, and while there, not only did they give up their vacation and everything else, their basements were flooding, but as well as some of them, they were out fixing, helping everybody else, and they got to their homes last. So if you see them, just thank them. They don't get thanked too often, and when you do thank them, it means an extreme amount to them. So please, I'm begging you, if you see one of our DPS workers, just thank them for everything they did. It's going to mean an awful lot to them. And anecdotally, Alice Cooper, I believe, went to Nankin Elementary School, which is now Lutheran High Westland. So he did attend. And that's all I have today, that's your history lesson. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Seven.
We are adjourned.